Call the fi- uh, meeting to, uh, call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. But before we do roll call, I just wanted to announce, point a personal privilege, that if you see that I'm acting like I'm almost blind, it's because I am. I just was diagnosed this morning with pink eye. So, nobody is to touch me, come close to me, because it's very contagious. It also hurts, but it also means I can't read real well. So my wonderful co-council members are gonna help me out. But, we'll start out asking Madam Clerk to have a roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of March 26, 2018 as proposed.
Discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Second. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, take a motion for travel requests, please.
Madam Chairperson, I have one travel request today would be for Sergeant Greenlee and Police Officer Mon- Moore to attend the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, GTSB Conference, west of Monroe, Iowa. April 24th to 26th, 2018, Mount Knott to exceed $224.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific, thank you. Would you take a motion to approve expenditures over $1,000?
Madam Chairperson? I'd like to make a motion to approve the following pre-authorizations to expend over $1,000. First is building inspections, amount an estimated shipping handling of $1,000 for fire alarm suppression system plan review for 1350 Katuski Drive Central Middle School Career Center. Second is Leisure Services, amount an estimated shipping handling not to exceed $6,000 for two handheld lasers to repel problematic birds on the golf courses and in the park system. Next is from the Police Department with amount an estimated shipping handling at $2,600 plus $36.55 shipping handling for a purchase of two sets of wireless radio headsets for motorcycles. Next is from the Police Department as well with amount an estimated shipping handling $5,000 for the purchase of five shield wear licenses. Next is from the MIS Department with amount an estimated shipping handling of $5,781.49 for annual renewal of McAfee antivirus for endpoints. Next is from Sanitation with amount an estimated shipping handling $1,994.88 for 30,000 informational door hangers. And finally, from Traffic Operations, is the amount an estimated shipping handling of $1,009.25 for one roll each of red diamond grade sheeting and EC black film.
Second.
Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. And I'm going to ask somebody to do the budget line items, please. Nine, 10, and 11.
And Chairperson, we have three budget line items to be amended. Number nine is to approve the budget amendment for the sportsplex activity to use $8,000 from the sale of equipment for building improvements as submitted by Leisure Services. Number 10 is to approve the budget amendment or the Traffic Operations activity to use $12,600 in additional damage claim revenue received to fund various additional operating expenses as submitted by Traffic Operations. And number 11, the last one, is to approve the project budget amendment to budget for additional donations received in the amount of $2,200 and budget to related expenses as submitted by Leisure Services.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Would somebody, Councilwoman Morrissey, would you take 12 and 13 for me?
Sure. Other committee business is number 12, a permission to seek bids and to sell to the highest bidder the ash tree logs that were removed due to the emerald ash borer infestation. And number 13 is a permission to sell various items of unusable metal scrap to the local metal recycling company.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Okay. As contained in the accounts payable report dated April 2nd, 2018, to be received, placed on file, and approved and passed along to the full council in the amount of $2,427,754.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Most deserved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Well, that was good.
Alright, are we ready to have some fun?
Yeah.
Are we ready to have some fun?
Yes!
Woo!
Not paying attention.
It was not happy hour before I got here, but I'm happy to be here. So Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schim?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Alright, thank you. And now I ask that you would join me in a moment of silence. You can stand or you can sit. Hats off. The pledge this evening will be led by Councilwoman Margaret Klein.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And there's amendment on the liquor sales for the snack shack. It should say does include Sunday, not to take out the "not." So, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended in the minutes of the March 26th meeting, 2018.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First items up on the agenda are our proclamations, and we have several important ones. The first person I would like to ask to come up for Sexual Assault Awareness Week is Alicia Smiley.
Did I get that right? I won't say it had anything to do with that nice piece of paper, but phonetically.
Alright, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional cause, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault is devastating, not only to the survivor, but also for the family and friends of the victim or survivor. And whereas, since no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault. Support victims, survivors, and their families, as well as support those agencies by providing services to victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, hereby proclaim the month of April as, April 2018, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence. So, Alicia, tell us a little bit more.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Alicia Smiley. I'm the Iowa Program Director with Riverview Center. We serve 14 counties in northeast Iowa. All of our services are free and confidential, and so we greatly appreciate all of the financial support we get from this community for you bringing awareness to this and proclaiming this month, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We also have great partnerships with local law enforcement, hospitals, and the county attorney's office, as we work together as a part of a sexual assault response team every month. We offer support for survivors and anyone affected by sexual assault, so we can sit and listen and help them process what they've been through and what they're experiencing. No judgments, we don't tell them what they have to do, need to do, or should do, we just support the choices they make for themselves. We also offer some prevention education and trainings in the community, so we have a prevention educator to help educate students and adults in the community about how to be active bystanders, how to try to prevent more violence from happening. We can also help people at the hospital if they go for an exam after they've been assaulted, or if they need to talk to the county attorney's office and talk to law enforcement. Survivors have a right to have an advocate with them while speaking with law enforcement and at the county attorney's office and in the hospital, so we have advocates available 24/7 to support people in those arenas. We serve many more people every day, our numbers climb, and so we just really appreciate any support that you can give us. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you for your advocacy and all that you do for survivors to help them make it through tough situations and tough times, so God bless you.
Thank you.
Alright, proclamation for National Community Development Week. I'd like to ask Mr. Rudy Jones to please come up. Alright. Whereas the week of April 2nd through April 6th, 2018, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant program, which some of you here are CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnerships program. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities that provide decent, safe, and sanitary housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnerships program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas, over the past five years, our community has received a total of $5,755,317.317 in CDBG funds and $2,008,389 in home funds. And whereas, the following activities have been funded: clearance and demolition, public services, playgrounds and parks, boys and girls clubs, Salvation Army, homeless shelters, YWCA, Habitat for Humanity, Operation Threshold, rental housing, emergency repairs, housing rehabilitation, neighborhood services, wheelchair ramps, Northeast Iowa Food Bank, home buyer down payment assistance, new construction, tenant-based rental assistance, foreclosure and credit counseling programs, weatherization programs, basic needs, and transportation programs. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Waterloo, Iowa designates the week of April 2nd through the 6th, 2018, as National Community Development Week. And that's in support of these two valuable programs that made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. And it is the week when we kick off the lead grant remediation program. So, Mr. Jones, tell us what's going on.
Thanks, Mayor. We first of all want to recognize the fact that even though there's a lot of programs and services going on, that don't happen unless we have great partners, and you mentioned a lot of those there. We've got a great team, we've got a great board and council that gives us a lot of direction, but we want to speak specifically to the lead grant that we were fortunate to receive a three-year, $3 million grant last fall. We're ready to ratchet that up, so we are in need of potential applicants that would call in our office at 291-4429 to get their name on the list, to see if they would become eligible for distribution of those dollars to make their homes lead safe. It's a three-year program, and it progressively goes up as the weather gets warmer, so we're ready to kick that off this week. Black Hall County Health Department is one of our primary partners. They're going to be addressing some of the initial assessments to determine the content of lead in the homes and to test the kids as well. So we're anxiously ready to get started with that.
And lead impacts?
Lead can cause irreparable damage primarily in kids if they induce them into their bloodstream, so we're trying to get into homes that were built prior to 1978. That's when lead stopped being used in terms of paint in homes, so we need to get eligible applicants so we can make homes lead safe.
Great.
So, if anyone is out listening or looking, or if anyone, any of you in the audience knows someone that can potentially benefit from this program, please make sure you communicate to the Community Development Program as well. This is, this grant that was written has been tremendous, and the work that's been done over the past length of time from winning national awards most recently, we really applaud the efforts of our Community Development Block Grant Program and your efforts and your leadership as well, so.
I was gonna start applauding.
It's not just owner-occupied units, but we added a component to the lead grant that allow us to address rental units, four units or less. So, 291-4429.
Alright, bless you, sir. Thank you very much. Alright, I would like to call up Christina Kofut and also Paige Cowing. Christina's from the UNI Center for Energy and Environmental Education, and Paige is from AmeriCorps. If you could please come on up, and company. How are you? Good, how are you? Alright. How are you?
Oh, yeah.
Stand over here if you want to, balance it out a little bit. Alright. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas service participants demonstrate dedication and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-governmental resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on the taxpayers' dollar. Whereas, the nation's cities are increasingly turning to service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet civic needs. And whereas, participants in AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nations, including educating students, supporting veterans and military families, providing health services, helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas, service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education and career skills and leadership abilities for those who volunteer. And whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps, Food Corps, participants serve across the country bolstering civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations, providing vital support to residents, and improving the quality of life for our citizens. I therefore, Quentin Hart, Mayor for the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2018, as Day for National Service. So, tell us all about that and who are other business.
Thank you. So I am Christina Kofa, I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator at the University of Northern Iowa, and I served for two years as an AmeriCorps Vista for Community Engagement on campus, and I had the honor to serve with AmeriCorps members across the Cedar Valley. I'll let them introduce themselves and say thank you to everyone for the national recognition of the service that all of these wonderful people are doing that isn't often recognized.
Hi, my name is Paige Cowing, and I currently serve as an Iowa College AmeriCorps Program member in the Office of Community Engagement at the University of Northern Iowa. And so I work to help build capacity for nonprofit organizations and connect the different organizations to different resources on campus.
I'm Jackson Griffith, a Food Corps AmeriCorps Service Member, and Food Corps' mission is to connect kids to healthy food in schools, and I do that in partnership with Iowa State Extension at Lincoln Elementary in Waterloo and Irving Elementary.
My name is Tyler Klosterman, I served with Land and Water Stewards AmeriCorps, along with these two. I'll let them introduce themselves, but I've also served with Green Iowa AmeriCorps in the past. We're based out of the Center for Energy and Environmental Education at UNI. Green Iowa's centered around helping low-income households with utilities and that sort of stuff, weatherizations. We are more based around land and water conservation, so water quality assessments and cleanups, native prayer revival, herbicide, pesticide reduction in public spaces, that sort of stuff.
My name is Matt Nieberman, also with Land and Water Stewards AmeriCorps, brand-new program this year, and also served with Tyler on Green Iowa last year.
My name is Bobby, like Tyler said, I'm also a Land and Water Stewart member. Just honored to serve with AmeriCorps, because not only do we get to give back to the community, but we learn a lot while doing it.
Well, I want to thank all of you for being at such a young age and having so much service on your heart, and the ability to work with people in the community that need your help the most has to be such a gratifying feeling for you. So thank you so much for all that you do and your efforts, and I hope everyone gets out on April 4th to do something for somebody else, so, alright, thank you. Alright, I would like to call up Karen Seiler, I believe. Friends of the Family for Crime Victim Rights Week. Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you this evening?
I'm good.
Good, good. It's my best eye. Alright, let me get serious. Whereas Iowans are the victims of thousands of crimes each year affecting individuals, families, and communities. And whereas, years of Iowa investment in crime victims' rights and services have developed a system of response that can help victims recover from crime. Whereas, reaching and serving all victims of crime is essential to thriving communities because those who receive holistic services and support are more likely to remain invested in their communities. And whereas, dedicated victim service providers are working every day to meet the needs of victims, yet there are still too many survivors without meaningful access to rights and services. And whereas, many survivors face barriers such as cultural isolation, language limitations, distrust of the system, or a lack of transportation that keeps them from accessing the services and systems that can help them recover, so we must make a dedicated effort to expand the circle of those prepared to respond to victims and to link them to resources. And whereas, engaging a broader array of healthcare providers, community leaders, faith organizations, educators, and businesses can provide new links between victims and services that improve their safety, healing, and access to judges, justice. And whereas, National Crime Victim Rights Week provides us an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights and receive trauma-informed response. And whereas, the Victim Resource Coalition of the Cedar Valley are hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors, building resilience in our communities and our victims' responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Quentin Hart, do hereby proclaim April 8th through the 14th as Crime Victims' Rights Week.
That was a mouthful. And I prepared my remarks so I didn't get lost and I didn't forget anything. So, my name is Karen Seiler, I'm the Human Trafficking Program Manager for Friends of the Family, and I am just one of many service providers and community members and individuals that are interested and concerned about providing quality services, victim-centered services, to survivors of crime in our community. And there are some more members of our coalition, some folks from Embark are here, and Mr. Tyson are here. If you guys would stand up and, we're all doing the work together, and it's a collaboration. So, just want to thank Mayor Hart and the City Council members for recognizing this and continue to stand up and believe that victim rights are important.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your dedication and for the others that you mentioned today. We support you and we support your mission and cause, so bless you and thank you so much. It is now oral presentations time, and we did have a request for someone to speak, but I'm thinking that topic and issue was probably one that was absolutely against a couple items on our front page, so I will not honor that request right now, but if there's anyone else that would like to come forward, let us know what's on your mind and your thoughts, anything non-agenda related.
Upon reviewing the Financial Committee Agenda, which I wasn't here for, by the way, but anyway, I pulled it down online and I found some things that are on my mind. Nine, 10, 11, and 13. The budget amendment for the sportsplex to use $8,000 from the sale of equipment for building improvements as submitted by Leisure Services. What is the reason for passing a budget if you allow an amendment to it? Because then the budget is just academic. And that applies to nine, 10, and 11. So if we're going to have a budget passed, and then you allow an amendment, the budget is just something that you've gone through for nothing. So let them do whatever they want to, and I see on one of these it's selling some, I guess the 13 is selling unusable metal scrap to local metal recyclers. Where does that money go, and what department's gonna use it?
So you have questions about budget, just in general, budget line items?
Yes, to be amended.
So, could, so, Michelle or somebody, could you just explain overall what a budget line amendment is and why we actually do it and why it's brought forth? We'll take the question in general.
Michelle Wheaton, your Chief Financial Officer, now give it a try. So a budget is a plan, and you all know we set those plans a good 18 months prior to the fiscal year actually beginning. Circumstances do change as a year wears on, and then, I believe you mentioned specifically the sportsplex. They had a piece of equipment that was being underutilized. They found out, and Paul can speak to this. They found out, and Paul can speak to this better than I can, that they had a lot of demand to use that space for something else. So they felt it was worthwhile to request the Finance Committee to sell the piece of equipment that was not being used and to renovate the space using the proceeds from the equipment so that they can use that space for something that would be more valuable and beneficial to the members. Sometimes people think government reacts slowly. And it does take us time to get through that process. But I do think we need to adjust our plans to match the reality of what's going on around us. And let's see, what was the other question about the sale of something?
Unusable metal scrap.
Right, so there's scrap. I believe that's at the Waste Management, the sewer plant. Scrap metal lying around, we can either let it lie around and rust, or we can sell it and the cash will go in the sewer fund and be used for things that they have that are necessary for operations.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
All right.
Thank you, sir. So I messed up on that. So we had five requests to speak tonight. There's one that I'm not, that I don't think is, that is in opposition to everything written on the front page, so I'm not going to allow that. But there's four other ones. There's two for the Orange Rezone, and we'll move those to that portion of the agenda. But Mr. Bruce, you're up on your conversation, so please come up.
Good evening. Bruce W. Kaser, CRT Apartments, Waterloo, Iowa. I'm saying that three, five years ago, plus years ago, I became the victim of a traumatic gun injury. And I would like to say enthusiastically, I forgive the assailant to cause me the harm, the injury, the loss of my three, five years of my life. But I have no hard feelings. And I'm just saying I forgive Mr. G. Thank you.
And thank you, Bruce, for being such an advocate on so many fronts, from victims' rights to ADA assessability. We thank you so much and just being at this council meeting as well. So thank you very much, sir. We have Hannah Sackett, I believe, is here to talk about the little library donation and installation. So please come up.
Hello, my name is Hannah Sackett.
Can you state your address and stuff for the record, too? Sorry about that.
I go to the University of Northern Iowa. I live on 2005 Campus Street, Bender Hall.
Thank you.
My name is Luke Pleasner, and I am a Northern Iowa student, too. Same address. So we are both freshmen at the University of Northern Iowa, and we're involved in a business organization called Pi Sigma Epsilon. And in our organization, we often do service projects where, for-profit or nonprofit, where we give back to the community. And we have a project here that we would like to propose to you.
We are currently working on building three little lending libraries. What a little lending library is, it kind of looks like a mailbox on a post. And inside of it are books that are to be used at free will. And either people can take one and keep it forever, or they can put books in or take books back. It's kind of like a library, but on your own will. And we have successfully built three of these without any cost. They've been donated by the Cedar Valley Community, the wood, the hardware. And we're interested in putting them in three different communities, which could really utilize them. And we would like to do this during this month because it's almost summertime and we really want to promote reading in the summer. So what we're looking for is three different communities that be willing to house these little lending libraries from us. None of us in our group are familiar with the Waterloo area. We're all kind of transfer students in from around. So we're not exactly sure where the best foot of these little lending libraries would be, but we're very interested in putting them in the Waterloo community and housing them in a place that they could be used to their full capacities. And all the books are donated, all the projects are donated. It'd be no cost to you at all. It's just finding a place to put them where they can really be used to their full ability. And I have informational sheets for anybody who's interested in finding out more contact information. So if you know of a place where they could be utilized or are interested in more information, I'd love to give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. You have information for all of us as well?
Yes.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, you were the gentleman that contacted me about Liberty Park. Our meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30 at Unity Presbyterian Church. So if you did want to come to that at 6:30 tomorrow and talk about the little, about the library thing, that'd be great.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, and I was going to also encourage you to talk to Felicia Knolls in our Community Development Department. She's our Neighborhood Services Coordinator. So she has a direct link into our neighborhood associations. And that may be a great, great place for you to start at and try to find out where they can go as well, so. And just call our Community Development Office, 291-4429, and ask for Felicia.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Sorry to interject on that.
No, you're fine. Teamwork makes a dream work. No, I had too much coffee today. All right, any other, anyone else for oral presentations? And if you don't happen to be busy, this Friday, from 11 to 12 at the Courtyard Marriott is the state-of-the-city address. Bow ties, bow ties can be encouraged, but if there's no bow tie, if there's no bow tie, please come anyway. I think we, the patent for the fasten or clip-on bow tie was actually founded right across over where Jamison's is at by a company in 1918. So it's the 100th year commemoration of that. So 11 to 12 at the Courtyard Marriott.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a point of personal privilege to thank my council members who are going to help me through tonight. I was diagnosed this morning just with pink eye. And so I can't read, and the lights are bad, and I can't recognize any of the faces out there. So please bear with me. And again, thanks to all my council members who are going to work me through all of this.
Nor can she tap council members or myself on the arm.
Oh, that's right. It's contagious. You got it.
Thank you very much. I'm here for you.
I don't know if I should wear a mask.
Sorry about that.
No, that's, that's. All right, all right.
Are we done with the public portion?
Yep.
Are we to council now?
Sure. Yep.
For one, you've got me out looking for a bow tie, and I've never worn a bow tie in my life, so.
All right, let's do it.
It should be a fun experience. One of the suggestions that I kind of came up with after I've talked with some other council members, and maybe this would help staff as well, when we get these council communications here on certain items, for instance, and I'll even hold it up, what it shows is it, it shows what, you know, what we're requesting. It shows the subject submitted by expenditure required and source of funds. One of the things I noticed when I first got on council was that source of funds that usually listed what the line item number was, the activity, and everything like that. So I could easily go into my budget documentation and say, okay, this is where the money's coming from. I understand that. But I've noticed lately, a lot of them are, and it's no particular department in general or anything, but it just says like TIF funds. Well, that doesn't tell me much because there's eight different TIFs. So, or GO bonds. I mean, that also doesn't tell me too much. So if we can maybe, and I'll even show it up for the camera here, I don't know how close they can get, but there's a bottom line here that says source of funds. If we could start getting the numbers on that exactly so that it's a little bit more clear to council, might help staff as well, and that way we're, just might help in general.
All right, thank you, sir.
If that's possible.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just like to remind people that this is a very historic week that we're going to be going through, starting tomorrow night at the Hope Martin Theater, Abraham Funchess, and I can't remember the other actress. We're going to, are going to have a presentation on a conversation that occurred, a supposed conversation that occurred between Dr. Martin Luther King and the maid there at the motel. And that will be at 7 o'clock tomorrow night. And then on Wednesday, at 10 o'clock in the morning, is the Civil Rights Award Ceremony at the Waterloo Center for the Arts. And several awards will be given out to very notable and worthy and deserving people in our community. And that'll be followed by the Civil Rights Tour put on by our own Charles Pearson as well, going through various places in Waterloo. So I hope that people will get involved and be part of this historical week for civil rights, Mr. Mayor.
Great point, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to offer my deepest respects to the Waterloo Public School System for working so hard this year and in such a collegial way to lower taxes. It was wonderful to watch, and I just love it that they've done this for several years now.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Okay, I moved, close the presentations, receive the comments, and place them on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, make a motion to receive the items on the consent agenda, place them on file, support them with the change that A1 would include the dollar amount of, of $2,427,075.04.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with a second.
Second.
Yes, a double second.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Good, item number 10, just got a call on that. Kelly, that is something we do every year, isn't it?
Periodically, as we're able to destroy those documents.
Those documents are digitally reserved or saved, right?
These are not. The council adopted a schedule of documents that can be, a schedule to explain how long documents get kept. These documents in particular, we don't have them backed up electronically, but they are within the schedule to be destroyed at this time. And then quite a few other documents we have that are, especially our permanent records, they're scanned in.
It looks like 2012 is the end date, so that's the seven-year.
Yeah, a lot of those, a lot of those have like a five or seven-year window.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number two, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof publication or notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2018 Ainsborough Avenue Improvements from US Highway 20 to San Marnan Drive, contract number 942.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I drove that yesterday and do not see what improvements we need to do there compared to some of the other potholes we have in the, in the city. So I guess my question is, why do we need to improve this section? Is the DOT paying for it? Are we paying for it? If it's city money, it ought to be put on another road rather than a road that doesn't have near the problems that a lot of other streets do.
Thank you, sir. Eric, could you highlight this project for us, please?
Eric Thorson, City Engineer. This is being paid for out of the San Marnan TIF funds.
Speaking to the mic.
It's being paid for out of the San Marnan TIF funds. And this is improvements to the actual traffic in that area. We're going to be widening out to four lanes and turn lanes there so that we have turn lanes at Fisher and the Fitzway intersection, and there will be signals installed there along with a trail on the west side of the road. And it'll run up between Highway 20 and San Marnan. So we, a lot of heavier traffic there. So it's really traffic improvement. It's not so much the road surface itself.
Okay, I guess my comment would be that we put in enough trails to the sacrifice of our city streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
That motion's been made with a second. Council questions? Yes, sir.
So it looks like on here, on the bids, we, our estimate was under by about $20,000, roughly. Does that mean we need to go back and rebid, or I mean, what, how do we keep coming under on estimates?
All right, repeat that question.
How do we keep, how do we keep coming under with our estimates? Our estimates, the estimate that we make keeps coming under what we get for a bid from contractors.
Well, it fluctuates, you know, like the University Avenue project, we were $2 million under. So I think $10,000, $20,000, we should be happy.
But this one's over, this one's over.
Does somebody want to speak to this?
Eric Thorson's here. We prepare estimates, or in this case, the consultant prepared an estimate for this project. And they do their best comparing prices from past projects and other projects that they may have information to. It's not a real exact science. So when a contractor actually puts their bids together, they figure out exactly how much they will have to pay for labor, materials, equipment, and all those sorts of things in order to put their bid together. So what the consultant or our department would do, or other departments would prepare estimates, is we prepare them as best we can based on past prices. But sometimes, you know, we're a little high, sometimes we're a little low. It's, again, not an exact science. In this case, we did get four bids, and they were all fairly close together. There was some spread, but it appears that that's what it would cost to do this project.
Mr. Mayor, then it also says, the source of funds on this is TIF and general obligation bonds. And I think Mr. Thorson covered on which TIF that was, the San Marnan. So when, is there any way we can find out when the general obligation bonds were issued? Was it for this year, or was it a previous project that we've been saving up for?
Where's the bonds coming from for this one?
Eric Thorson, the GO bond funds are out of trail funds that were previously issued.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to the city engineer for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The first bidder was Kay Cunningham Construction of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $770,396.25. Second bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $781,407.15. The third bidder was Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa. They provided 5%. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $909,055.50. The last bidder was Beef Construction of Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $822,723.45.
All right. Thank you. Uh, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing on a request by Heinhold Hog Markets LLC for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District for the construction of a 12,375 square foot livestock processing facility located south of 720 North Elk Run Road.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and, uh, receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain properties located south of 720 North Elk Run Road.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Uh, council questions?
I would just have a question about timing, but I'll wait until, until.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Uh, that motion's been made with the second. No urgency. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schim?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
All right. Thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number four is a request by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc., on behalf of Friends of Faith Retirement Homes, Inc., to rezone 14.5 acres from R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District and R3 Multiple Residence District to R4 dash, R, R dash P Planned Residence District located at 600 Park Lane to allow for the redevelopment of the existing retirement home community with construction of approximately 211,968 square foot, feet of total structures.
Second.
Is that a second?
Yes.
All right. Uh, that motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item?
I'm Lisa Gates, the CEO of Friendship Village. I live at 121 Pershing Road in Waterloo. I'd like to take this time to thank the city for, and the people who have been helping us on this journey. It's been a lot of meetings and we appreciate that very much. About, uh, no, not about. Over 50 years ago, a group of people got together with a vision to build a retirement community, community in Waterloo. It was a new idea. It was a life care plan community. And, uh, they were in so much in favor of this idea, this vision, that many of them put up their own homes as surety for the mortgage. The, um, original folks had a vision and, um, that we opened up our first phase on May 1, 1968. So on May 1, 2018, we'll be celebrating our 50th anniversary. We'll be celebrating our past. We'll be celebrating our future. Our board has also taken the steps of, um, determining that we will be rebuilding if possible. It's our hope, our goal, on the same footprint where we are now, uh, providing the same level of care, but with different amenities that baby boomers such as many of us in this community will want. Uh, there will be multiple dining options, excuse me, um, larger units, uh, hopefully a swimming pool, wellness center. So it, we're very, very excited about it. Over, um, a year, well, close to a year ago in June, we announced it to our residents. Um, had a meeting with them. They were excited, but wanted to see what we were doing to them. We, uh, invited the neighborhood to come. We had 12 folks come. This year, with the city sitting, sending out their, uh, letters, the, uh, res, the neighborhood, excuse me, uh, became somewhat concerned. There was a thought that we would be taking their homes. And I'm very thankful for the gentlemen who went around door to door saying, you need to come to the Friendship Village meeting because we had over 60 this time. And we were able to, uh, reassure them that, no, we are not taking their homes. We will be building on our own footprint, providing a better service, um, than we have been able to because of the new facility. And, uh, the, the gentleman actually stood up and said, I was wrong. I'm very much in favor of, of this, um, project. So overall, the excitement has been there. We have had very few folks from residents to neighbors to staff saying we shouldn't do this. Lot of excitement has been generated. I just want to reiterate that the board and Friendship Village is committed to our vision from over 50 years ago and to the city of Waterloo.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, thank you so much to, um, everything you're doing was a, a, a great meeting. Think it maybe a year or so ago when you first started moving towards this direction and, uh, for your investment, uh, to those that are most vulnerable in our communities too. But we still got to vote on it.
You bet.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, speak to this item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Going a s, yes, sir.
Oh, I was going to close the hearing.
Yep.
Uh, motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property located at 600 Park Lane.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, council?
Is there any, um, timeliness on this at all?
Is there any timeliness?
I want to make sure Mr. Young had a chance to speak. Good evening. I'm Mike Young. Uh, yeah, I'm a lawyer in Waterloo at the Dutton Law firm. I live at, um, 215 Pauline Place in Waterloo as well. Uh, i, for the timeliness of this, um, I would say generally the, the faster we can get the approval, the better, um, because there are a lot of moving parts that have to come together, um, that the certainty of the approval for the zoning would help. Um, that said, it's going to be a, uh, this is a two-part process, so we still have to go before the Board of Adjustment, I believe, the 24th of this month as well. So, uh, our ideal would be that it was moved up, whether it was this week or possibly next week, but we still have to go for the 24th, um, for final approval. So it, it's really the pleasure of the council.
Yeah, I think we kind of shifted around our meeting dates this month as well, so, um, all right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Uh, we got a vote on the, considering pass. Uh, madam clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like, now I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now I'd move to consider and pass for the second, third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schim?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Five, six and seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number five is adopting a resolution to concur with the determination of the city planner that the proposed change in the, to the approved site plan for a 59,468 square foot expansion to Tyson Fresh Meats located at 501 North Elk Run Road is minor and shall be approved as a minor site plan amendment within the M2P Planned Industrial District. Item number six is adopting a resolution approving application to the Black Hawk County Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Alternatives Program, funding in conjunction with the Cedar Valley Lakes Trail Bridge and Cedar River Brinker Lake Connection. And item number seven is adopting a resolution approving application to the Black Hawk County Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Alternatives Program, funding in conjunction with the Shawless Road Trail.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, Noel, we see the Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Alternatives Program. Could you highlight the, just a little bit what this is?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the city of Waterloo is a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, which works to disperse the federal road dollars that come from the federal government to the state of Iowa and then from the DOT to the various communities. Um, the road dollar formula is based on population, um, then it comes into the MPO here locally, and we work along with our fellow, uh, sister cities to disperse the funds in an orderly manner for projects throughout the urban area. Um, Kevin Blanchard is here from the, the MPO as well tonight to answer questions on that. The reason you're seeing these resolutions is the DOT basically changed the process for the allocation as we're going through the approval process for funds, um, to where we have to have a resolution supporting that project as we submit. Um, where, whereas before, a lot of that was done more in a staff, um, basis where you'd see the project at the end when it came to actually time for construction and all that. Now we're, we're basically stating that the city will support moving ahead with this project as we're supporting, as we're requesting the funds.
All right. I have a, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Anderson, on number six, um, with the, the Lakes Trail Bridge and the Brinker Lake Connection. Has that been approved now that the Cedar can be connected to Brinker Lake?
Doug Schindel's also here from AECOM. AECOM was hired by the WDC to look at this connection to see if it was, um, engineeringly possible. I believe that they have achieved the no-rise certification that would be required. So now we're to the step of moving ahead with securing the funding and working with our various partners at the DOT and the DNR to move ahead with this project.
Well, and please address also, at one time, uh, when Kevin was just a baby and I was in his spot, we had asked DNR and they at that time did not want the lakes and the river connected because if they were, then the lakes became sovereign water. Have they moved past that now and it's now acceptable to connect the two?
Kevin's looking like, boy, I'm glad I don't have to answer that question.
Sorry, guys.
And then, and then also, I didn't know there was a word called engineeringly.
Where's it?
I, I thought that came out pretty smoothly.
Yeah, you thought. All right. Doug, sorry about that.
That's a tough act to follow, but we have had meetings, uh, two or three meetings with the Iowa DNR and kept them in the loop throughout the process. So, um, we have not submitted actual permits yet, but we have done the hydraulic modeling indicating that this project is feasible and can be built, you know, without a, uh, actual rise in the flood profiles of the Cedar River. So we have technically completed it, but we haven't went through the formal per, permitting process, and that's kind of the next step. But we have, they have seen that. They have seen this application, um, and, and previously, um, so, and, and they are supportive of it. And, and we're actually meeting with the, with the Park Ranger, uh, Lori tomorrow, um, with the WDC to, to help move the project forward.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
When you were a baby.
Something? Sure. I'm still dashing, Sharon. I know you can't see me, but, um...
I think you kind of look like Kevin.
Now, um, I think Doug touched on some of the, and I'll just re, this is just starting the process for programming, uh, for both this project and the Shawless Road project. The city will submit those to the MPO and we've got a selection committee that will go through and, uh, score those and rank those and, you know, um, we're probably, again, going to have more, uh, requests than we have funding for, but certainly these are two projects that are going to be considered. One thing that has changed with this program, once it's programmed and there's an agreement in place, the city will have two years to get the project to a letting. Uh, if they don't get it to a letting, and that's not just Waterloo, it's anybody that's, uh, programmed, or any project that's programmed, then we would not, we, that money would go back to the state. So that's just something, the permitting and all those types of issues are things that I think it's important that the city, I know, is working through with, with AECOM[1517.84] I think it's important that the city I know is working through with AECOM and the DNR. So it's good that they're doing that, so.
All right. All right, thank you. Mr. Drive, you have a question on these three items?
David Drive, 3145 West Forest Street, actually all three of them. But I guess I'll start with the six and seven. I guess I just, I'm sure I just heard that road use funds, is a bicycle trail now considered a road? Because again, I'll repeat that we keep driving through potholes on our streets, and we're spending road use money to build a bicycle trail. I have a Harley-Davidson. I can't ride it on a bicycle trail, because it's motorized. Yet, there's no money coming from the people that have bicycles. When I was a kid, I had to buy a $5 bicycle license hanging on the back of my seat in Parkersburg. Why don't we bring that back so they help pay for these things that are taken away from my having, not having, being able to drive through a pothole on my street? That's real an irritation. Okay, then the other thing is Resolution Five, that it's a minor? Well, then when we look back up on number three for the Hog Market, that's 12,375 square feet, is that a major? But almost 60,000 square feet's a minor? What, I know what the definition of minor is, but what qualifies one to be a minor and the other one has to pay full ride?
All right, thank you, sir.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. There are no road use dollars going into six and seven. This is federal transportation dollars, a certain percentage of which has to be set aside through the Transportation Alternatives Program for uses that are eligible for non-road use such as trails and all that. So this is what those funds have to be used for. We've used them in the past for trails. We've used them for the renovation of the Unique Building, since it was a former railroad depot. So we've used them in other areas, but we cannot use them for the road projects. Going back to the Tyson Minor, the zoning ordinance is a large document with a lot of different information in there. Since the Heinhold one was a new project on a blank site, that is a major change in the M2P planned industrial district. Since Tyson has an existing building there, and this addition is under 50% of that building, we're able to classify it as a minor. We like to run that through council for concurrents, since it is 60,000 square feet in size, to make sure that everyone is in agreement that has a minor change.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with questions? Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So just to go over where on six and seven, it looks like we want to eventually put up a 20% match on this from bonding. So just to confirm, this is not anything we've bonded for yet at this point. What we're simply doing is we're approving an application to this entity to try and get some funds out of them, get the 80%.
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. That is correct. We're moving ahead with this, obviously with the intent to bond for it and gain as much non-city funds to meet that 80/20 goal.
So what we're doing is we're just, we're trying not to use bond funds, general funds, anything like that. We're trying, what we're doing is we're seeing what we can get through various...
Correct. The last segment of the Shawless Road Trail that was built, we actually were able to use MPO funds to match state recreational trail grant funds to build that section of Shawless Road without any bond funds.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
Oh, I just wanted to add that all three of these are pluses for the city of Waterloo. Otherwise, I mean, sort of a no-brainer, why would they be here on our, to get our approval? But one is a development that's going to add revenue to the city base. And six and seven, contrary to what I hear, involve amenities that attract people to come to Waterloo. I mean, the Brinker Lake-Cedar River connection has been something that has been discussed for years. And now, we're at that point where we're looking at doing something about that to make better use of a resource that Waterloo is underutilized, and that's the Cedar River. And part of the amenity concept includes the trail system, which, again, I need to reiterate. I mean, Waterloo, the Cedar Valley, has one of the sought-after destination points that people go to to enjoy bicycling, to enjoy recreation trail going, whether it be bird watching or just going out for a walk on the trail system. And contrary to what I hear, I don't know anybody, at least in my circle of people, who does not pay sales taxes, who does not pay state income tax, who does not pay federal income tax. So these, you know, the comments that are negatory towards amenities like a recreation trail that's used by any number of people, I don't agree with it all. I see these five, six, and seven as something that's going to be attracting people to come to Waterloo to add to a revenue base, and it's something that we should all be encouraging, I would think, rather than disparaging.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Eight, nine, and ten.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number eight is a resolution approving Second Amendment to the Development Agreement with Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, approved August 7, 2017, for property generally located northwest of 1318 Martin Road to be a part of the 1031 Exchange, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number nine is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Via Rail Logistics LLC for the development of a rail park layout in the Midport Tiff District in the amount of $66,250, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute said documents. Number 10 is a resolution approving agreement for mitigation of utility facility conflicts with Century Link QC for services related to the FY 2018 University Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, Green Hill Road to Evergreen Avenue, contract number 933, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Thank you very much. Questions about these three items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Eleven and twelve.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving professional services agreement with AMET Design of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed $91,020 for construction services related to the fiscal year 2018 Amesboro Avenue improvements from US Highway 20 to San Martin Drive, contract number 942, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Number 12 is a resolution approving award of contract to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of $1,226,902.06, and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2018 Asphalt Overlay Program, contract number 943, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Questions? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schimpf?
So on number 12, after the article that was in there this last week, I've never had so many positive calls regarding anything that I voted on this council, or questioned for that matter. What is the timeliness on this? When do they plan to start the asphalt overlay program?
All right, Eric.
Eric Thorsten, City Engineer. With the approval of the award and then the contracts and bonds, we'd be setting up a pre-construction meeting probably as early as this week. And weather permitting, they'll probably get started next week. A lot of preparation work that goes on before they actually do the overlays, so.
When would they anticipate being done with that?
Well, they have, I believe, most of the construction season, but this project typically goes along pretty quickly unless we have a lot of weather issues. So it'll be wrapped up this fall.
So it goes along quickly. So then, maybe it's essential that we also look at the same projects that we're recommending for the asphalt overlay, and we see what the price of concrete would be for those projects. So maybe it would be prudent to get an RFP out for estimates on that, and perhaps table this until we receive that RFP back and see, so we can kind of have an analysis of what the difference between asphalt and concrete is. I was able to speak with some former city officials from some surrounding communities in Waterloo, and they all told me that they, in the past, didn't have any trouble getting multiple bids on asphalt programs all the way as far away as Cedar Rapids. So I guess, I'd just like to see what our other options are with that. So I would possibly move to table this item until we get an RFP out to see what the price of concrete would be on those same projects.
We don't typically use concrete for this type of a project. We bid alternates on our reconstruction project, which is a different project than this one. Concrete overlays don't typically work real well on residential streets where you have curb, because you lose your curb reveal pretty quickly. So it's also a much more expensive process and more time-consuming than the asphalt overlays that we do. So we have not typically used concrete overlays. They're not real conducive to this type of work.
So Eric, on this particular item, asphalt is probably the choice based upon the information you just provided. I think maybe one of the broader questions, I know we had a work session some time ago to talk about concrete versus asphalt, and we have new council members. So I think we probably need to have that conversation again so that everyone can hear the presentation. And then, on some of these projects, what can the city do? We need to take a look at to try to increase the amount of concrete bids we potentially receive. But is it possible to get a work session set up beginning in May or so for Mr. Schimpf and the other council members to kind of hear about concrete versus asphalt? And then, maybe a couple suggestions you may have on being able to get more bids?
Well, for this particular one with the asphalt overlays, we explained last week, we only have one provider here locally, and really only one contractor that can do large projects. There are several smaller contractors that can do driveways and parking lots, but they don't believe have the binding capacity to be able to do a project this large. And I did check since last week, and I believe only Des Moines Quad Cities, because of their relationship with Illinois, and Council bless Omaha because of their relationship with Nebraska, have more than one asphalt plant. So it's not very common in Iowa to have more than one asphalt plant in your community. Generally, the volume of work doesn't allow that to happen. You have to have a lot bigger metro area, so that there's more work for those kind of plants to be installed.
Well, what I'm probably, let me say it in a different way. Next month, can we have a presentation of the conversation about concrete versus asphalt for our new council members so that they can hear that, they can chime in on that conversation? And then also, seeing how in the future, maybe it may not fit on this project, but I think overall, folks want to hear about how we can increase our concrete bids somewhat. So I'd like to have that sometime in May for them to have that information.
Yeah, we could certainly put something together.
All right, yes, sir.
Eric, I was wondering, in the asphalt overlay program, how many of those streets, if any, have already had maybe the first overlay on them of asphalt?
I'd have to go back and look. I can't tell you that right off the top of my head.
Eric, there probably would be a certain number of them that have already had one overlay.
It's possible.
Okay. And would, once there's an asphalt overlay, wouldn't it be rather difficult to put down concrete over asphalt?
Well, it could be, but you can also mill off the asphalt overlay that's existing and get back down to the concrete. But typically, when you do that, you get back down to really bad joints that take a lot of repairs. So it's not all the realm of possibilities, but...
And that would add to the cost?
It would.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think we need to go back to sometime in May so some of these questions can be answered at that time as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As long as nobody else has any questions. So one of the things I'd like to know, and I'm assuming with asphalt, we're being charged by the yard. Would that be accurate?
Well, we bid it by the square yard, yes.
By the square yard, okay. So what I guess, one of the things I'd like to see is, I attempted to contact some officials in Cedar Rapids today and some other communities, and I wasn't successful with that. But I'd like to see what they are paying per square yard as well for some of their overlay programs or whatever. And I know, I can't remember what the project was called in Cedar Rapids. They have a special name for their road reconstruction and that kind of stuff. But I was not able to get a hold of that gentleman. But I'd like to see if we can't get those numbers, just so I know, you know, are we in the same ballpark here? Are we, what exactly is going on with it, I guess, just a little more information? And I'm well aware of, you know, that there's only one company here in town, and they do a great job. They provide, you know, a lot of jobs here locally, which is great. But I'd just like to see, you know, what exactly, how we're coming out on that.
Is it possible to move forward tonight? And then, we come back in May, we get some more of your questions answered, and then we can kind of work together to structure some other questions you may have too, so that when we have that presentation publicly, people have that info.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
No, I said it was possibly. No, I didn't actually move.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Can someone take 13 by itself?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, or Intercog, and the city of Waterloo for services relating to updating the 1973 area-wide sanitary sewer study and funding in the amount of $37,500, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. This is the one we had the work session on and been talking for a while. Took this by itself. I did get a call from a member of the Gaming Association, the chair, and he indicated that there's a potential, they have a meeting on, I think it's April 16, and we need to go ahead and prove it, because it's not a done deal, but they could potentially come back and pay for a large amount of this actual, but we need to move forward, but their meeting is on April 16. There's no guarantees, but what I'm hearing is folks are excited about the possibilities of being able to look at this as a regional approach, so. But it would be nice to move forward, and if we don't have to use this, then that's even better. So I wanted to take that by itself. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 14, 15, and 16, please. Mr. Schimpf?
Could we take number 16 by itself, please?
14 and 15.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Number 14 is a resolution approving a no-match grant application to the Iowa Assurance Community Pool ICAP in conjunction with the purchase of four motorcycle helmets in an amount not to exceed $1,000. And number 15 is a resolution approving professional services agreement with RSM US LLP of Waterloo, Iowa in an amount of $7,980 for network firewall design, implementation, and training with hardware procured from CDW Government in the amount of $22,000, and authorize the mayor to execute said documents.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes. All right, thank you. 16.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Number 16 is a resolution approving amendment to agreement for animal control services between the city of Cedar Falls commencing July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, with an increase of approximately 1.5% per call, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Mr. Schimpf?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So on this, we are, we provide a service to the city of Cedar Falls for animal control. We're upping the cost of, the price of the calls a little bit on this, but we're upping it 1.5%. Last year, the COLA, which is the Cost of Living Adjustment, increased 2%. And I just feel that, you know, we're providing a heck of a service to the citizens of Cedar Falls for what seems like a very low cost to me. You know, and I kind of looked at other options, and well, what would the city do if we didn't provide, what would Cedar Falls do if Waterloo didn't provide them with animal control? So I had an opportunity to talk to the Cedar Bend Humane Society today. It would be an extremely large startup cost for the city of Cedar Falls to begin contracting animal control services through Cedar Bend. It would also be a large startup cost for them to do it on their own as well. And I just don't see that initiative. And I understand the, you know, helping out your neighbor and everything, but, I mean, in this instance, I think everybody up here was, and I know everybody up here was elected to serve and watch out for the tax dollars for the Waterloo citizens. And we're always talking about, how can we increase revenue? What can we do? This seems like a great revenue source to me, and a revenue source that does not fall on the backs of the Waterloo taxpayers at all. It does go into Fund 525, which I know during budget time, we heard from our head code enforcement officer, we heard from our city attorney about, you know, how badly we needed another code enforcement officer. And I see this as a potential to try and work for something like that. I really think that we could up some of these prices a little bit, and it's, I think it's necessary. You know, we talked about raising fees during the budget cycle. You know, some of us didn't want it 0%, some said 4%, we also had some that said 8% as well. And, you know, I understand, you know, if you want to, you either have to increase your revenue, or you got to decrease your expenses. And, you know, one way to increase our revenue is through upping fees. And I was a little leery on that, because, you know, there was a lot of fees in there. There was a lot of, there was fees to contractors, things like that. I'm not a contractor, but I don't want to negatively affect them or any economic development within the city. Believe it or not, I'm a great ice skater, and I've rented ice skates down at Young Arena, and I would have had no problem paying an extra dollar for that. But I see this, and I think we need a fee study done citywide, and I know that's something that you were working on that we talked about. But I see this as a great opportunity to raise these fees. So I'm actually going to move to amend item number 16, and you might want to, I have some numbers here, so if you want to write them down, what I'm amending to. I'm amending the domestic animal call from $112 to $120 per call, the after-hours call from $128 to $150, the wildlife call from $99 to $110, and the after-hours wildlife call from $110 to $125, DOA call from $68 to $75, the after-hours DOA call from $78 to $85, and the DOA deer call from $97 to $110. And it should be noted that typically, on those DOA deer calls, they need to bring out two individuals, because it does, it does take two people to lift a deer carcass into the vehicle, from what I've found out. So I think this is a great potential, and I would hope that everyone else on this council would support this as we continue to look for revenue sources and use this revenue to help our city, who we were elected to represent.
Mr. Schimpf, I'm going to ask you to read those again.
Sure.
Slowly.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
The domestic animal call, the first one, I'm proposing amending to $120 per call.
Okay.
The after-hours call, I'm proposing amending to $150. The wildlife call, I'm proposing amending to 110. The after-hours wildlife call, I'm proposing amending to 125. The DOA call, amending to $75, and the after-hours DOA, amending to 85, and the DOA deer, amending to 110.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, I'll leave it for discussion. I do move to amend that with the proposed numbers that I listed.
Mr. Mayor.
Second. All right, so we have an amendment to change the fees that have been negotiated already.
I just want to note, too, the contract has been approved by Cedar Falls already.
Well, I think that Cedar Falls, I mean, they'll be able to negotiate that in their chamber, so.
I've had a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. First question, Councilman Schimpf, the amount that the increase was is 1.5%. So that amount that you are increasing, is that taking it to that 2% that you're talking about, or is that going higher than that?
I would assume these are a little bit higher than, yeah, it's more like around 10% somewhere in there. I don't have an exact percentage, and I tried, I mean, not all of the proposed ones on here are exactly 1.5%. I mean, they're roughly around there. I don't have an exact percentage, just what I thought was completely acceptable for fees.
And then the other question that I had was, is what is the actual dollar amount that we take in, that we have taken in from Cedar Falls through the collection process?
Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that that line item number was $76,100, actually, on what was proposed. It went up five, it went up $4,000 from last year's fiscal budget, and to my colleague from the Fourth Ward, I can tell you that, that line item is, line item
So, so what I'm hearing here, Councilman, is that we would be looking at approximately, if it's a 10% increase, an additional $7,000, somewhere in there?
7,000 plus the 4,000 that we have scheduled to generate, which is, I don't know, because this is the first time I'm hearing about this. So who else has questions?
I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor. And it was along what Councilman was saying, how much money does this generate from, not, forget the new negotiated contract, but from what we had before to this, what would the increase be, and what are you basing the increase on?
I don't.
Have you checked what the actual cost is of doing this with Sandy? What's the basis for it, other than just wanting more revenue for Waterloo?
I mean, I guess that is the basis for it. I mean, our expense totals for animal control come out to $266,320 a year. Actually, we're in the, we'd be in the red, a little over $155,000 per year on animal control. So I mean, by doing this, I think it, you know, it ups the, obviously, we've heard that Fund 525 is doing well, which we've heard from other things, but I think this, this increases the amount that we can put into there, and we can start working towards getting that, you know, third code enforcement officer that I think is so desperately needed and we, we heard about, so.
But I guess I'm asking what you base this on. What percentage of our calls are from Cedar Falls? Just, we have to have some basis. We're going to sell this to Cedar Falls. We have to have some rationale.
And our calls are roughly about 20% of our calls. I have right here on the actual PowerPoint that was given during budget time. I can give you those numbers, if you give me just a second here.
But if you're saying the whole cost is 200,000, that's what you said?
266.
Okay, and yet you're charging, you're proposing to charge them, I don't know, over 76,000. That percentage doesn't line up with our costs at all. And I would think, you know, we've always wanted to have neighborly relationships with Cedar Falls and be a helpful citizen. That doesn't mean we give away the farm for free, but I think we have to have some rationale, other than just wanting more money.
Well, and I don't, it's not just to want more money, it's so that we can actually, you know, fund what is needed for Waterloo citizens here in this instance. And I think we are being good neighbors by providing our services, you know, we, we provide our services for an exchange of monies. And I just think, you know, we, anywhere else you go, you know, whether I go to buy a stick of bubble gum, or I go to buy a brand-new couch, or whatever that is, I'm not just paying the cost, I'm paying a little bit above. And, you know, this is, this is one instance, like I said again, that it does, it's a revenue source that does not fall on the backs of the Waterloo taxpayers whatsoever. Anybody in this room that lives in Waterloo, this will not affect you, this will help you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
First of all, I guess, before I make any other comments, I'd like to hear from Sandy Greco about this, what she thinks of this amendment, if that would be possible, Mr. Mayor.
Sandy Greco, Inter Public Works Director. What I can do, if you want to table this for a week, is do a spreadsheet on these new fees, and the ones that I did, and we'll come up with a cost analysis. I can also tell you that I'm not sure if this will hurt our contract, and they will back off on, I mean, we do 24/7 service with them now. Not that we're called out at night that much, but anything over four o'clock at night is a night call to them. So any calls we do between four and nine, or four and eight, when our officer's on duty, we charge them the overtime fee. They may cut that out and just say, we only want your service between eight and four. So, which would hurt us, basically, on revenue. So let me do a spreadsheet, and I'll come back, you know, with that, and I can also visit with Cedar Falls and just get their, their comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Thanks, Sandy. It sounds like we've already sat down, or Sandy, or somebody from her department have, beans that she has four, it sounds like, thank you, Sandy Greco, that we have already sat down and negotiated with Cedar Falls to come to this contract, this understanding where we were going to vote on this tonight. And if we negotiated in faith with them, and this is what they believed, and they passed, and have approved this already, then aren't we backtracking on something that we've already agreed to with another community? I would be opposed to that. And the other thing is, it sounds like it's a 10 to 15% increase that we're asking from another community. And I guess I like to put us in any other community's shoes, that if we were being asked and told that in order to provide the services, we're going to increase your fee 10 to 15%. I mean, this is coming from the city council that said no to any kind of fee increases in our own city, but yet we're going to turn around and say, we want fee increases for this other community. I would see that as being not only ironic, but somewhat hypocritical for me to vote in, in that way. And another thing is, I have heard, ever since I've been on council and before, that there is a desire from Cedar Valley communities, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Evansdale, to try collaboration when and ever possible. And in the spirit of collaboration, I don't think that we should be doing something that would be looked at, trying to have our revenues increased while decreasing another community's revenues. And with what Sandy Greco said there, that the end result may end up with a net loss to us. So for all those different reasons, Councilman Schimpf, I just could not support this amendment.
All right, Mrs. Klein.
I just have a couple of questions. How, I would like to know how 1.5% was the percentage arrived at? And do I understand correctly, animal control runs in the hole, or rather seriously in the hole? And then also, just the cost of doing business just for Cedar Falls factored out, how much? I'd like to know what that all is.
All right, Sandy. And when we say runs in a hole, I mean, it's, it's a service that we provide, but when it comes to what we contractually provide for them, we recoup our money, and we're asking for a little bit more for the services that we provide right now. But Sandy?
Okay, I didn't bring all my forms with me, but last year, we did, for the fiscal year of 2017 to 2018, we did a 3% increase with Cedar Falls. This year, we went back and did a cost benefit analysis, and on that, and I can get those figures to you, that's how we came up with about 1.5% that we would stay within that means, again. I guess we don't look at it as, we provide a service, we're not out there to make big bucks on it, but what, what Cedar Falls does, the revenue we get from Cedar Falls pretty much covers our cost to the Humane Society for boarding our animals. So it's, it's kind of a wash when it comes to that. And because we don't pay for boarding Cedar Falls animals, it's just Waterloo's. We take in, and we also pay for what the citizens take into Waterloo, it's not just what we take in. So Waterloo takes in a greater, greater amount than Cedar Falls does, or what we take in for Cedar Falls.
Mr. Mayor.
We have Mr. Schimpf, and we'll come right back to you.
I guess when I spoke with the Humane Society today, they explained that owner abandonment wasn't charged back to the city. So I don't know, maybe I'll clarify that with them, but they did on here, on that same budget, on line item 1314, we went from 60,000 to 75,000 due to an increase for animals taken into Humane Society. So the increase takes effect on the 1st of July of this year. So that is a 25% increase that we received from the Humane Society. But then back to that, the City of Cedar Falls is receiving a 1.5% increase. So I think that they're going, they're going to have to bear a little bit of the burden of that. And then to some previous comments, I was not okay with raising fees on Waterloo citizens. Again, this doesn't raise fees on Waterloo citizens at all, it's for a service that, that we provide to another community. And, you know, I just, I guess if they stop taking animal control from us, I mean, if they want cats and dogs and stuff running around through their streets, I guess that would be Mayor Brown's prerogative, and he would have to, you know, he would have to come to us to figure that out, I guess. It just, it seems to make sense to me to raise this.
Mrs. Jewen, and then Mr. Schmidt.
I'm not saying that any of these ideas are bad. Raising fees to Cedar Falls or ourself, I think warrants a fee study. The concrete versus asphalt deserves some discussion. I'm not saying, again, that any of these are bad ideas. What I am objecting to is having it presented to us at the last minute, right before a vote. We're slowing everything down, we're making it more difficult for the staff and the contractors, and the projects themselves are going to get delayed as a result of our action. I would hope we could be more proactive and do this in advance of a decision, rather than right on top of it, and be able to give some thought to these things, and not spring it on everybody at the last minute.
Mr. Schmidt.
Well, and I guess to echo Councilmember Jewen, I get the 1.5%. I mean, that kind of caught my eye, too. That's almost not an increase. But I do think, you know, over the years those of us have been on council, we've heard how we, we subsidize other communities for fire, for police, for code enforcement, for planning and zoning, for all the things we do that the smaller communities can't afford to do. And so I think that should be a mutually beneficial arrangement. And, and we seem to find out, kind of after the fact that, well, not sure if we're making money or losing money providing that particular service. So what I'd really like to do, and I do agree, I think it's a little late in the game to be doing this now, but I'd like to see us, if we don't already have a subcommittee for this yet, that we have a subcommittee for this, and we look at these things ahead of time, and, and three months out, six months out, and then we make a recommendation and negotiate and kind of go from there. I think that'd be the way to do it.
So.
Mr. Schmidt needs to go wash his hands immediately.
Or get a drink, one or the other.
And, and any other comments? I think the challenge we have right now is kind of like going to a closing. And then all of a sudden, at the closing, it's like we're going to do 10%. I think there's a lot of validity in taking a look at historically what we have charged for fees, and then taking a methodical approach to making sure that we are where we need to be. So I think it's a challenge doing that tonight from folks that have already certified their budgets. In the future, absolutely, let's take a look at it and, and see, I think Mr. Schmidt said mutually beneficial, or someone, someone made that comment, but I think this is something we probably need to take a look, a little bit further down the road, and make sure we do it all within a study. But the motion to amend, amend an increase that's on the floor right now. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
All right, and with that said, there has to be some type of fee and rate study to take a look at all these numbers.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would then move to table this item until next week, so that Sandy can get the materials put together that she was.
Second.
So what does she need to have?
She was, I think Sandy, you said you would kind of put together a spreadsheet for us of, of these fees, and how that would affect things, and what would.
Mr. Mayor.
So we have a motion and a few seconds?
What was the time period on the table?
Till next, next week. So the ninth.
I would oppose the, the motion to table, only because the information that Ms. Greco is going to give us is great information, and we need it, but it's not what we were advocating for in a more complete and comprehensive study.
I would really like us to understand the context of what we're doing right now. We, we really need to take a look at that, and this could affect partnerships all over for the rest of the timeframe that we're on council in this seat. So I don't have a vote. You just quoted the numbers, 266,000, and quoted the increases of every particular line item that's under there, but I would, I would ask the council, please, let's move forward tonight, continue this partnership, come back like we've all talked about, and do a fee study, but I have no vote on this. But we need to, we need to move forward. So comments, anyone? Madam, Madam Clerk?
We're voting on the table.
Yes. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Jewen?
No.
Thank you. We have an original motion on. Madam Clerk?
And this is for the 1.5% increase, correct? And this is for the 1.5% increase, correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, I, I just like there to be an understanding that, that the table discussion that we had here will be part of next year's, whenever we're going to be doing a contract with Cedar Falls. That discussion has to be something that takes place, so.
And what, what we're going to do is take a look at every, almost every fee that we have within the city to make sure that we are charging correct and, and move forward. But to take our time to go through that process, to do comparative analysis again with other communities as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So just to ask a couple of questions before we vote then. So would you, or maybe this is a better question for Ms. Greco, but most of the cost of these activities would be labor, wouldn't it? If that's the case, are, are we not giving our employees greater than a 1.5% pay raise?
That's per call.
I guess my point is if we're, if we're given the, you know, if we're gonna increase our costs more than 1.5%, maybe we should be looking at this. I imagine this would start July of 19, uh, July 1st of this year, right? So I think it should be more equitable possibly, and maybe Councilman Schimpf is on to a good idea here for us to take a look at this. Because we're gonna pay out more for labor, but we're gonna charge less for reimbursement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
That is, that borders on the concern I had. Cost of living is 2% this year. And I thought it should at least achieve the 2%.
Okay. So, so part of, part of, part of maybe what we take a look at in this particular section. And I don't know how it equates to other areas as well. Cause some areas we probably can do better than 2% to 3% and some we probably won't. And maybe this one when we move forward in the future, next year, maybe even more. But I think having those types of ideas would be great to be able to build our fee schedule. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, thank you. Seventeen and eighteen.
Yes, sir. Item seventeen is adopting a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau's Board Recommendation for Funding in the Event slash Capital Hotel Motel Grant Funds for Fiscal Year 2019. Number eighteen is adopting a resolution approving Convention and Visitors Bureau CBB Board Recommendations to Fund the Fiscal Year 2019 Partner Grants.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries nineteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a request by Hope M. Anderson to rezone a total of 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District for the development of a 210-lot subdivision located next to 5805 Kimball Avenue between Kimball Avenue and Highway 21 and north of East Orange Road. And this is on the motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving to rezone a total of 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District for the development of a 210-lot subdivision next to 5805 Kimball Avenue.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. We've had a public hearing about this already. We did have some calls in from Mr. Henning and Ms. McPhee. So if you would, one of you would please come up and let us know your thoughts.
Good evening. I'm Eileen McPhee, and I live at 204 Lipton Boulevard. My husband and I have lived at Orange Township since 1985. We have four adult children who grew up in the Orange Township also. We have seen a lot of growth in that time period, and now we are talking about additional growth to an area that is already heavily taxed with traffic flow and limited parking spaces. Side Hill, Lipton, and Orange, which are the streets that surround Orange School. On Side Hill, there's only one block long, and Lipton has, is two blocks long. And that's where we reside. Parking's permitted on Orange Road, but it's very dangerous as there are no shoulders and the ditches are pretty deep. So on the evenings where the school has activities in the evening or in the daytime, whether it's conferences, carnivals, or whatever, the parking lot overflows and the parents and grandparents park on both sides of Lipton and Side Hill and make it very difficult to navigate to our homes. If Paradise Estates gets approval, the traffic situation will only worsen. So please don't rush into approving this rezoning until all the facts are in. And please consider those of us who are not only concerned with our well-being of the neighborhood, but also the well-being of our school and teachers. Thank you for listening and for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McPhee. It's Mr. Henning.
I'll use 10 seconds. Let everybody stand up a second. Sit down. Anyway, Mike Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. I too live down in the Orange Neighborhood Association. I just want to continue a little bit from last week. Last week, we talked a lot about the, or I talked about safety concerns in four specific areas. But I did not hear the city council talk much about when we get the traffic study done, do we have the money to fix stuff or don't we? And I would like to hear that discussion tonight. We did work on Kimball Avenue. I sent you all an email on the other side of the Viaduct to, to improve the safety and stuff at the corner of Sam Marne and Kimball Avenue. Tonight, we had a, a nice discussion on doing something similar at Amesboro and Sam Marne. But we gotta get over the bridge, and we gotta make safety improvements south of the Highway 20. So I would like to hear a discussion from the council when you do your deliberations on how are we gonna take care of, of Shallas and Kimball Avenue. I did a, I checked with the police department, and we've had 114 instances since January 2013 through 3/26 of 18 at the corner of Shallas and Kimball Avenue. Not all of those were accidents. There's other stuff in there, whatever. I don't, I don't know how to read the report. But that's what they've got. So it's not a, it's not an incident-free intersection, is what I'm saying. I will have the numbers next week for the comparable intersection on Amesboro Avenue, which we just made into a four-way stop. But in my mind, there are gonna be expenses associated with this. And as we've looked at and some other, some of the other safety issues, I don't want to just see it put out, okay, we'll put it on the end of the 10-year plan and address it. As Eileen says, we've, we've got problems now with safety. So that's, that's a big concern. As you move on down, we have again the problem with the hill between the proposed Paradise Estates and the school. You can't see very well in that area. So that could, you know, what are we gonna do about that? Whether that's turn lanes or frontage roads or whatever, it's not gonna be free. And so what are we gonna do about costs? That's, that's a concern. We know, and you've talked about budgets tonight and how tight those are. We know within the states themselves, as the Leisure Services Department says, we can't handle maintenance in there. So we can't have trails. We can't have parks because of the maintenance fees. And that's in the planning and zoning documentation. So how are we gonna handle the safety issues on the highway? We also have all the traffic backup that Eileen talks about. Dr. Lindeman did a good job of coming down a couple of weeks ago and getting the after-school traffic rerouted to our street. But we still have, you know, a couple hundred yards of cars, cars every day that are there that really should not exist. The last thing on that is, I'm still very concerned. And I've asked Eric to set us up a meeting to talk about what we can do to get Heather Snyder so she can get across the road to pick up her kids at school without having to ride her electric wheelchair down Kimball Avenue and back. That's a, that's a big safety concern. And hopefully somehow we can get that resolved in the very near future rather than, than having the big delay that I talked about last time. We have also talked about, you know, what all can, can we do? As a, I'm still curious, is the Waterloo streets policy, complete streets policy still in effect? Is there a committee? Is there reports? I don't know. I've asked for that, and I'll, I'll have that for you next week to see what, what kind of progress we're making on that. But it sure seems like we're leaving a lot of stuff out. It is a big addition. Mr. Anderson talked about that last week. And so it probably deserves some attention from the city to put in some, some quality-of-life features. The only unique thing there is, is Mr. Anderson is looking at a, a dinky little boulevard in one of six entrances to the property, and we're calling that, making it unique? I don't think so. So that's what I have for today.
All right. Thank you. Good sir. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
My name is Alex Bauer with Faragram. I am one of the members representing Mr. Hope M. Anderson on this development. It's been a pleasure working with all of the city staff. They have provided a lot of guidance on and recommendations as to what we put together. And has led us to the R1. We have originally had some R2 in there. With, working with both Eric and Noel and planning, they recommended not to do it. So we did make that motion. I should have took notes, and I do apologize. There have been many comments about safety and so forth. It's very hard to get into comments about safety with rezoning. Preliminary plating process is coming up very swiftly. And just to let you know, with that process, we are required to upgrade all fronting roadways. So currently, right now, for example, Orange Road is a rural section. We have to then make that an urban section. So there, on our frontage side, of course. So we would be removing the ditch, installing storm sewer, and that would also have curb and gutter up to, I do believe, the minimum width on that road is 31 feet. Up from what I believe now is a 24-foot road. Or half of that would be 12 and 15 and a half, respectively. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Dryer, you better walk up a little bit closer.
Barbara Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive. And I would like to ask the Orange Township people to stand up so we can let people know who you are. Got some laying back, so thank you. I moved to Orange when I was 25 years old. That was in 1979. I had fallen in love with the area when I was in a point on, out on my job. I was doing in-home sales for J.C. Penney, so I got all over the neighborhood. And I knew I found the place I wanted to live. 1979 was a year of great change. That is when this stuff was happening, and people said, be sure to choose a place that has a, a school, great school. Well, I didn't have any kids. And most of the schools back then were crappy old buildings, plus the boundaries were changing. Well, we didn't have any kids, so I said I'd worry about that later. We had kids. From 1989 to 2000, we had children at Orange School. And it was a funny old building, but the kids loved it. In fact, one of the T-shirts said, it's not the building, it's the people. Rest assured, I love the new buildings. I'm in full support for that. Well, things have changed since 1979, but Orange kept its charm. We'd also looked at Ottoman Park and Klingham and Knowles and different places. And in the past, I said, man, I'm glad we didn't move there because, you know, it's just kind of whatever. Someone commented that schools are a housing magnet. Well, I would like to point out, there are 11 schools in Waterloo. Kingsley and Lowell are old buildings that have been renovated. The other nine buildings are completely new builds. The first one being Walter Cunningham School, which opened in 2002. So I am very proud of those new buildings we have here at school. Our country area is a true neighborhood, a small community of nature and relative tranquility. Mr. Anderson also told us that, he was told when he sold the land for the school that, uh, and housing would be welcome around the school. Well, the neighbors were told something too. The neighbors were told that when the new streets went in, that there would be a connection to the school. There is a strain on our neighborhood on Kimball Avenue and also in our neighborhood, as Eileen talked about. So I would like to ask you to table the rezoning until those issues are addressed. Sad to say, Waterloo population is stagnant. The growth of city streets and services is eating up the city budget. The CLURA that is in effect assures the growth of city with no tax revenues except for the land for three years. Is that why we have no money to pay for the services? I think the city needs to think long and hard about why people are not moving to Waterloo. If we want growth, we need to give people a reason to move here that does not include paying them to move here. Thank you. People aren't strong.
All right, thank you.
David Driver, 3145 West 4th Street. Again, last week I said I don't have any skin in this game. However, I think I do have some skin in this game in the fact that we continue expand, expanding the footprint of the city. That requires more emergency services, police and fire. My, and this lady kind of reiterated to that, or iterated to that, that how many people that have built new houses in this town right now are already at full tax? Because we put in a lot of services out there for this new addition that us that are paying the full boat right now have to pay for until they come on three years from now. We do other TIF districts that are, are three, five, 10, 15, 20-year abatements. And I hope I live that long, but I don't think I'm going to. Why don't we wait a few years for those properties that are not paying full taxes yet to come on for full taxes? So your budget is relieved to make this expansion and have these amenities available for them. Cause I, I suspect that you put a bigger housing district out there and there's a lot of houses go out there. The next thing I'm gonna hear is, oh, we need a fire station out there. Who's gonna pay for that? Cause they're still on their abatements. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Todd Oberdahl, 124 Hammond D Drive. I would like to stand up here and say that I, I'm not in opposition to this development as I've been listening to both sides for the last couple of weeks on, on this. I do believe that if Mr. Anderson wants to develop out there, that is prerogative. And the residents are certainly in the right to make sure that the development takes place sensibly. And they don't feel that a process is being bulldozed through them. The idea that this zoning has to be done, this rezoning has to be done right now, I think is, is not, not so. I think it would be reasonable to ask for the traffic study to come in before we continue with this zoning process. If we continue with the zoning process and they start the plating process, then we're in the position where we can't stop the plating process because they've already started it. Let's do this right from the beginning. Let's not find ourselves once again in the situation where we're correcting problems after the fact. When we have a tragedy out in a stretch of road out in that area, then we're very, very rapidly looking for a solution to that. We have a chance to plan this whole development out and do it right. And have the citizens that have been living here for decades feel comfortable that as Mr. Anderson said, that he wanted to be a good neighbor and have good neighbors, that this actually takes place, and it starts right now. this actually takes place and it starts right now with having the residents that live out in Orange feel that they are a part of the process and not merely spectators. It was brought up that Mr. Anderson was told when the school went in that he would be allowed to develop that. That's a little troubling that we have some sort of oral handshake deal in the back room that's holding sway over this decision. It wasn't in writing. The residents are saying that they had some promises made also. Well, let's get all of that in writing. And let's make sure that everyone agrees to what everyone thinks should happen. And then we move forward as a community. And we can be good neighbors with the current residents and the new residents on Mr. Anderson's development. I ask that this council table this until the traffic study has been completed and presented to the City of Waterloo for analysis. I believe this is a prudent and sensible measure to take. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. I think it's a gentleman that, oh, he just elbowed him out the way and kept going.
Former basketball players, you can tell that, in the lane.
My name is Garland Angov. I live at 144 Windsor Drive in Waterloo. And Mr. Anderson wasn't able to make it this evening, so he wrote a little statement and asked if I would share it with you. Mr. Anderson wrote a short statement. He said, "I could read at the meeting. I wish to thank my development team for all their efforts on this project and also all of the city officials who helped. We just want to have a quality and unique project that will be a benefit and asset to the city and to the school. We welcome positive input from the neighbors. And as I said before, we just want to be friends and neighborly." Buzz Anderson. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony Ertz, 230 Lipton Boulevard. Mayor, council people. Like to speak to you about your, the problem. I think you're looking for revenues. Quite hard, actually. And realistically, I think if you approve this, yeah, you're going to get some tax money out of this. But realistically, I think you're, the short-sightedness you're seeing, I'm going to go back to the agricultural thing on this, is that when you take this very productive land and take it out of production, nobody's going to want to put it back. I don't see any other lots in town where we've torn down and put, and started planting beans or corn on it, or hay, you know, for grazing or anything like that. I don't see that happening. So I don't think, and I don't know that, you know, my front yard has three inches of dirt in it. My backyard probably has more than 36 inches. Nobody's going to want to farm my front yard again because they screwed it up. So when, there was a comment made last week that, you know, they tore up the land back there and they put houses in. Well, I'm just living in one that was old. I didn't have to build a new one. The, the economics that I want to get back to again is, when you take this very productive ground out of production and you put it in to housing, you actually hurt your own people quite a bit. Because it's going to raise the cost of food. And we have a, a lot of people probably, I see, I've seen homeless people in town, you know, I'm pretty sure they don't have a very easy time getting a meal. And it's just going to raise our costs up over time. I don't know that that, you know, I'm not an economics person directly, but I think that really kind of weighs in here. And you guys are hurting, you know, you're, you're looking for these revenues there, but you're going to hurt yourself in the long term after we're gone. Because that ground is never going to be able to be farmed again. Nobody's want to, you know, I don't, unless, you know, the, the smart thing to do to be to, to say, okay, hey, if we get, if we tear down houses and we want it, they should be required, the people who develop it and/or live there would be to escrow money to restore the land to its usefulness. That'd be really smart and, you know, that's kind of an economics thing. But the other thing is, the reason why around my house, that it used to be, you can look in old pictures, it was farmed, but if you go about 125 yards to the, to the north, water comes up out of the ground when it rains out there. I've made this comment a few times before. That's not farmable. You know, it's, and it's cold, it's cold water. So, people saying that, reason why this wasn't developed or land. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir. See, you just played with me. That's our inside joke.
I'm Mayor, Council, Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. You know, I come to every meeting and I keep hearing the police department, fire department saying, "We have more square miles to take care of than Madison, Wisconsin. And now we're going to add more homes out there that our police department, I hope, don't have to take care of, but we're going to have streets, we're going to have houses out there. I hope none of them catch on fire. We're going to have to protect them with the police department." But yet I come to the meeting and I've heard them say time and time again, "We are stretched." So what are we doing? We're just adding more to the, to the city? We got more streets? We got, we have to have more fire protection? We have to have more police protection? I mean, you know, that's my opinion. So, I think we're just stretching everything, so I'm against it. Thank you.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I believe this development and the way it's been proposed is a smart development. We need more tax dollars. We need more quality homes. Sounds like that is definitely what this is going to be. The city owns a large plot of ground out there where the old school was. If we can do this right, and I mean take care of the storm sewer, I come from the bad area town where we had to have our storms all worked on. Take care of the water pressure problems. Do it right. Make it right for those people that are there and make it wonderful for those who plan to build there. And bring in more tax dollars to help with our budget in the coming years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It's in my drawer. All right.
Kevin Council, Percy Beakizer, CRT Department, Waterloo. I'm in favor of this because with new development comes new ideas, new energy, new hopes, new dreams, new money, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Boy, I feel special. I step up to the microphone and the mayor walks out of the room.
But he put me in charge, so it's okay.
You weren't going to point that out, Bob. But, you know. That's not safe either. Bob Manning, the executive officer for the Cedar Valley Home Builders. I remind you that in 12 minutes, the National Basketball Championship is held. My wife has a chance to win 30 bucks and I'd really like to get out of here. That'd be 8:19, Bob. Tip off.
My address is 2908 West 3rd Street, Cedar Falls. I've been a lifelong member of the Cedar Valley. And we've seen what happens when there's new schools that are built in Cedar Falls and how the demand for housing has increased because they have close schools. And we hear repeatedly from the Orange people that they moved out there and they love the area because they had a school. And thinking, "Come on, folks. Really? That's what this is about? We've got people that would build in Waterloo, Iowa if they have a school that they can go to for their kids that's close." I mean, really, we've got four large employer bases within a mile and a half of this area with Crossroads, Tower Park, Covenant Medical Center, and VGM. These are places people would like to move to and they haven't had choices. I've had a daughter move to a new house. Other people in Orange have had a daughter and husband move to new houses. But they've looked at Orange. They've said, "That's fine for the people that's there, but this doesn't really fit what we're looking for. We, we want a newer house." You know, now sometimes our kids, they want all the bells and whistles. But if they can pay for it, they get a chance to do it. We don't want to deny that opportunity to people. How are we going to grow our budget? We can, how are we going to grow our services? We can either continue to cut budgets, which is difficult, or we can try to raise revenues. I love the idea of raising revenues. And $52 million of houses out in this project will raise over $1 million in tax money, eventually. Not tomorrow. Because we're only talking about four houses, at best, having basements dug in 2018. And maybe 10 or 15 in 2019. So, but after rezoning, then there's a replating. And then a final plating, and that's several months apart. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Dave Schaefer. I've lived at 150 Side Hill Drive for 43 years. And the people in Orange aren't opposed to this. We're not a bunch of radicals. I personally welcome it. But I want to say one thing. We've got to get the water pressure, the, making sure the streets are safe, the sewer and all this stuff. Let's get this figured out before we jump in. And it could turn out to be something really great if we do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Council?
Monique Walters, 5404 Kimball Avenue. Just a comment, a few comments. Last week, members of the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance spoke and, as well to echo the comments made by Mr. Manning tonight, who speak in favor of this development for tax growth opportunities and so on. I can agree, and I think there's been other comments, that other residents of Orange and non-residents of Orange Township can agree with all of those things. But I would hope that at the same time, we should all be able to agree that the tra, the traffic safety issues that have been, been brought up surrounding this area need to be acknowledged. I don't think they've been acknowledged by city or the school. They've been, "Well, we'll, we'll do this or we'll fix this and we'll," but it's not been acknowledged that it is a real problem. And that inappropriate, long-term solution needs to be implemented before the traffic and/or the population in that area on Kimball alone doubles or triples. Now, I know Mr. Manning just said, you know, four houses maybe next year, maybe 10 or 15, maybe the year after that. Okay, well, it's a problem now. Whether we put four more houses or 10 to 15 more houses in two years, it's going to be then a bigger problem. But we still haven't addressed it. Alex Bauer made the comment tonight about, you know, they would have to make some changes along Orange Road. That's great because the settlement, the development butts up against it. It still doesn't address Orange Road, or doesn't address Kimball Avenue at all. I would request that the traffic study encompass the areas all around, as it was suggested at the planning and zoning meeting, from Shawless, 21, Orange, and Ainsborough. Not just the immediate vicinity of the development. I would also ask that the council table the request until the traffic study is done for an adequate amount of time to review that traffic study, to make an informed decision of the facts on how the City of Waterloo, Waterloo schools, and/or the development team can find a solution for this very real problem that exists now and has existed since the planning stages to build Orange School. Not sure why this wasn't addressed when the school was built. Comments that had been made was that the residents of Orange told it would be, but it wasn't. And now it's five years later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schep?
We're on council right now. So I, I wanted to be known that I am in favor of this development. But I would like to know whether that's from Mr. Angov or Mr. Bauer, who are here to represent Mr. Anderson. How are we coming with that traffic study? Where are we at with it?
As recommended by the Planning Commission, we, the traffic study is not due until the final plat is submitted to the city. So, meaning that the final plat will not be up for consideration with council until the traffic study has been submitted, reviewed, and approved by the traffic engineer.
Very good. I think, out of all the concerns I'm hearing for this, the, the traffic is by far the one that is, I believe to be the most relevant. And I believe it, it is a concern. There's a school there. I completely understand what the residents are saying with that. I don't, I don't know so much about some of the other ones, but the traffic one is a big one for me. I guess if I was the developer, and I hate to hold up any development, ever, I, knowing that a traffic study would need it, there would be some urgency on my part to get that done so that it was kind of curbing some of the fears, or, or some of the reservations, excuse me, not fears, from some of the residents out there. So I, I would like to see if there was a little more urgency on that traffic study. I, I can say that should I not see a traffic study before final plat, I will be voting in favor tonight of this, but should I not see a traffic study before the final plat, then that would cause me to not vote in favor of it. And I don't want to hold up development. I don't, I don't want to have to be put in that position. So if, if we could get a little more urgency on the traffic study, that might alleviate some of the reservations and some of the things that I'm hearing from some of our residents here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I speak on some of the ideals of why it is set up for zoning, preliminary plat, and then final plating?
Sure.
So, as, as you could see, this, what we're talking about is a hundred, roughly 130-acre development. When Mr. Anderson first hired me, he asked me to set aside a, a opinion of cost for what it would take to do the entire subdivision. The improvements alone are roughly about $8 million. If you consider usually about 10% of the improvement cost is what goes into design and some of the other things that are necessary to make a development go, you're looking at $800,000 roughly in design fees for a development of this size. So, so the cities can work with the developers and make progress. They've set this up in layers so that we can start peeling back, you know, one thing at a time. First, we take a look at the zoning. Is the zoning appropriate for this area? Does it, does it meet, you know, the amenities that are provided to it? Sanitary, water, traffic? Once you peel that layer back, you look at the preliminary plating. Does this preliminary plating fit the zoning? Does it fit the rest of those amenities that we looked at previously in zoning? Do we have the necessities provided to the site to make it function? Then after that's agreed upon, we move into the final plating. The final plating is the final nuts and bolts. Let's get down to design, put it all on paper. We go back to the city, have things reviewed. And at that point is usually when, well, typically with any city, when it's decided, yes, this is of sound reason. It meets all of our ordinances, go ahead and build it. Or no, we have issues here, you're going to go back, you're going to redesign it before we will.
Mr. Mayor?
Are you, are you done?
Yes, I am finished. Thank you.
You finish up, Mr. Schep?
I, yes, I am.
Mr. Morrissey?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just looked at my notes from last week and I wrote in here, in the discussion, before any plating, a traffic study has to be done. Sir? Could you check? Could you check? And I mean, that's what I had written in my notes.
Final plat?
Well, no, I said, I wrote in here before any plating. So...
That's for this week, though.
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. At the March sixth, twenty eighteen meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request, subject to the condition that a traffic study be submitted prior to the submittal of a final plat.
So it wasn't any plating, it was a final plat?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, Mr. Mayor, my question is to, uh, City Attorney Zellafer, if, um, we approve the, uh, rezone, and then we approve the preliminary plating, and then we get this traffic study, uh, which has to take place before final plating is brought to us, I believe, not to Planning and Zoning, correct? Um, that if that study comes back, um, can the city, can the city council at that time vote no on the final plating, which would then result in this project being, uh, terminated, correct? And would that pose a legal problem for the city of Waterloo to go that far and then reject the final plat because the traffic study recommended, or there were things in that that showed that it was not a good concept to follow through on?
Dave Zellafer, City Attorney, no, this, the city council can certainly reject an unsafe plat at any time. Uh, if a traffic safety study comes out and says this is unsafe and it shouldn't be done, and the council approves it, I think, uh, that would be worse. So, uh, no, they, they will have no liability for the time being.
And, and I'm not saying that it, you know, I know there's laughter of that, but I'm just saying, would the developer at that time have a legal recourse to sue the city?
Well, I doubt that would happen. What would happen is they'd sit down and work it out so that the traffic safety was, uh, was handled. Nobody's gonna invest that amount of time and money. Well, I don't, I can't speak for Mr. Anderson, he's not here. But, uh, I'm certain they would cross their i's and dot their t's, or vice versa, and, uh, and work out another plan. These things are amendable. Just wanted to make sure you're listening.
So, so the question is, from a, a legal perspective, the process of going through and having to have a traffic safety and have some incorporation prior to the final plat, um, that's an expectation that was just quoted, uh, in the planning file. So, this has to be done, and if it's unsafe, uh, the council has every right not to approve it and not have to be worried about any legal recourse. So I'm thinking I'm hearing, to summarize all that he just said into what you actually ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, I think, you know, in general terms, some people would say government tends to kinda do things in a more reactive way than proactive way. And I think that, uh, you know, maybe the schools we're talking about is a, a pretty good example of this, 'cause for those of us that have gone out to Orange, when school's getting out, that's a bit of a cluster, and it looks like a very unsafe cluster, and I think government created that. And now, there may be a discussion about what are we gonna do about it? Well, in the meantime, let's maybe throw a little more wood on the fire. And, uh, it seems to me that the logical thing to do would be to step back and do this in a calm, orderly manner. And I guess my question for Mr. Anderson's representative, oh, I'm sorry, you moved. If we were to table this, uh, until the traffic study is done, did I hear you just say the traffic study's not gonna be done until this process moves along? So if we get into a little stalemate here, what's your best guess on where that goes?
Best guess is that if you table this at this point in time, uh, it would hold our forward progress for roughly five to six weeks.
But the traffic study would, would proceed? Is that what you're telling me? I mean, you're gonna get to the point of having that traffic study done?
Are you tabling this for the purpose of the traffic study?
That would be my motion.
Yes, that would take five to six weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a motion to table this until that traffic study is done.
Second?
Alright, that's been made with the second. Question I have is, what, what is the, what, what is the... No. What is the process for which we have utilized that, um, that we need to use for this? Do, have we, um, we have a planning and zoning process that we utilize? Um, what is that process? Are we making them do something that we haven't done or made another developer do?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, not every, uh, not every new subdivision's required to do a traffic analysis, so they are asked to be, they are being requested to do more, um, for this traffic analysis, um, for this area as part of the request. The zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinances obviously work in, in unison on, on these types of developments, and it's very set process of they're going through the zoning first, then they would normally go through the preliminary plat, and the month after that, they would go through the final plat. So the process is set up to go through the steps to obviously help everyone examine everything in a timely manner and to help minimize costs, as Mr. Bauer noted, to the developer, um, for him spending a lot of money on a traffic analysis before the zoning is in place. Um, so he's taking more risk, um, by, by taking this at this time. And, and if you table it, I believe, uh, that'll be a discussion Mr. Anderson and his team will have to have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, is a compromise that we would pass the zoning tonight contingent upon the traffic study being completed prior to the preliminary plat? Would that be an acceptable compromise?
Obviously, the council can do as they wish. The zoning in place is the most restrictive residential zoning we have. The zoning has absolutely no specific ties to how this development is laid out for traffic, lot size, lot layout, drainage, or anything. That is in the plat process, which you still have, um, at least two more votes on when that comes in after going through the Planning Commission and the Technical Review Committee, which will have all the city departments and utility companies reviewing it for adherence to the proper codes, safety, and other measures.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Uh, what I'm hearing here is, is, is that taking it through the process, getting all the way to the final aspect of this, before that happens, that traffic study has to be done. And that will come back to us, and we have the ability at that point in time to say no, with no repercussions. So for me, I can't support tabling this, because in my mind, by tabling this, what we are doing is, is we are going to be adding cost to that developer as far as him doing the things that he needs to do to move forward with this. By us going ahead and passing this, we still have the first plating. And before the final plating is done, we have the ability to listen to these citizens if they still feel with that study, it is not safe. At that point in time, if the study's not safe, I, I won't support the development, I can tell you that straight up. But to table this, I don't think is a direction that we should be going at this point in time.
We're only rezoning tonight. Mrs. Klein?
Mr. Mayor, um, I totally agree with my colleague, Councilman Amos. I think to de- to delay this process, when in the end, we're going to have the ability to stop this if that traffic study is bad, I just think it's an unnecessary punishment to a very good developer and a very good plan. I want that traffic study too, though. I mean, it's got to come, but to do this kind of false preempting delay, that's harmful to developers. Weather is key, time is key.
Just, just to clarify too, a little further. So the traffic study will analyze traffic patterns that are in the area now, and it will analyze the locations of their proposed streets, um, lot layouts, how the traffic pattern's gonna work within the development. If you have them try to do the traffic study ahead of doing the plat layout, the traffic study doesn't know where you've approved the streets to be to do an adequate traffic study. The traffic study's gonna come back and say, if you lay it out like this, here's improvements you have to make to meet safety standards. If you lay it out like this, here's improvements you have to make, and that'll be part of the discussion in that plat approval process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's sorta like putting the cart before the horse.
Mr.? I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. My turn. Um, I will, I will not be supporting the, the tabling, um, but I did want a second to make sure that we had some discussion on it, to find out where folks were at. I, I would again reiterate to Mr. Anderson's team the need for that traffic study, and, um, I guess if it was me, I would probably make sure that the traffic study started this week. So, um, this, there is a form of delay here by waiting until the, the final plating. I can see that, and I would just like to rest assured the, um, the current residential, uh, residents of the Orange neighborhood that, from what I'm hearing up here, I don't think you would get a vote should that traffic study co- come back, um, that it would negatively affect things. And there is, of course, a school there, um, I have small children that are of school age. I certainly don't want them or any other children to be in any kind of danger from traffic. So, um, that will be given heavy consideration, I believe, prior to approving any final plating or anything like that. But just, just once again to, um, you know, kind of express the concern for the traffic to Mr. Anderson's team, and if you could, if we could maybe get a little jumpstart on that, that would be great, I think.
I probably, if it were me, I wouldn't do any traffic study until I found out that it was actually going to be rezoned, because that'll be an additional expense. And we're already taking these one week at a time, so they need to know that it's going to be, uh, rezoned R1, so they can develop plat plans and all of those things that Noel just mentioned. But until then, how would they even know? And so, we're gonna go tonight, potentially there's a table on it, but why would they spend the money? If you don't even know what it's going to, what it's going to be? So, the sooner we can get this passed, the quicker they can get on actually knowing that it's going to be R1, so that they can move forward with the traffic study in those areas as well. Mrs. Klein?
Well, that's a very good reason to, uh, consider to pass for the third time, to get the show on the road for the traffic study.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, if, if this were to be second and third reading tonight, is that gonna move the, uh, traffic study up?
Well, it'll definitely move the traffic study up. Um, the only concern there as well is that preliminary plat, as Noel had mentioned, he is correct that even if you, i- if we move forward with the traffic study before we move forward with the preliminary plat, and then you decide to change the preliminary plat, is now the traffic study void?
So, als- also, uh, and I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Noel Anderson, but going back to this traffic study thing, so, I, I don't know that anybody would argue it's not necessarily the safest setup today. Uh, I don't know who's responsible for that. But, so as we look at this development, and we look at making the changes that should be made, maybe on the school's land, uh, and then also further up the road on Kimball, also at some of these other intersections, also possibly down at Orange and Kimball, who's gonna pay for that? Where's that money gonna come from?
Obviously, that'd be something we need to look at, the results the traffic studies say. You know, if it says that, uh, everything is working well, except that the school needs to add a separate, uh, driveway or something for the buses, that would be something that we would share, that information to the schools about the concerns for safety. Obviously, if it says that there is a roundabout needed at, uh, at Kimball and Shawless, you know, that's obviously something. Just seeing if he's listening. Obviously, that's something we'd have to look at, making those improvements, or it would be a four-way stop, or, you know, long-term, short-term, and all that. But we need to find out what those, what those recommendations are, what the impacts are, to know whose responsibility it'll be. It could be that it comes back and says, hey, the developer just needs to change the design or the location of a street, and it'll be a lot safer than that, so it's, again, it's, it's kinda dependent upon the study itself.
But I think it's a challenge, um, in this situation, when we were, we are, the question that you just asked, when we were outside of the process that we use for other folks, I think these types of questions like you just asked come up, is the traffic study void? But, we, we got a motion and a table, unless that table wants to rescind.
I'd be willing to rescind that motion upon the further discussion.
Alright, thank you, sir. And, um, we have...
That's fully resetted, I don't need to rescind my second, right? We learned that?
No, you don't.
We've already had an opportunity to address the council, sir, um, this evening via email forum that was at Orange and, and...
And that is, if you wanna understand what the preliminary plat is, it's up for approval at four o'clock tomorrow in this room.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna have some attendance. Alright, uh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Sorry, this is on the original motion, 'cause the, the table was withdrawn.
I figured it was, yes.
So Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Staying to possible conflict?
We, we, uh, we, we discussed a little bit earlier.
Possible conflict?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, just point of order, that's a no vote then?
Oh, if you stated or don't state it, that would... It would be entered in, Mr. Jacobs, it'll be entered in as a no vote.
I abstained.
Uh, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We probably want a traffic study soon, so, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Staying to possible conflict?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
So your vote means that the traffic study won't start for a couple more?
We just approved the second, and we gotta go to a third reading next week.
Yep. Alright, uh, number twenty?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive file?
Wait, hold on, hold on. Before we leave, you know, to those that are watching the television, folks wanna know that developments are safe, and they have all the mechanisms in there if they see some currently existing challenges. But what I wanna also send the message out to, the city of Waterloo would like to continue to see development, growth, opportunities for family and quality of life. So I don't want this to be a funeral procession. This is exactly what we're looking for, great neighbors, great community, great opportunity. So, um, folks that are looking, um, please continue to invest in the city of Waterloo, and give my sentiments to Mr. Anderson as well. And I'm not gonna let you talk right now, because I just did the same thing to Mr. Henning. Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, motion to receive file, considering passed for, uh, the first time, and ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code by adding subsection two A, Airline Highway and Wagner Road, full actuated to section five forty, obedience to official traffic control devices.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk? Uh, we had a, who we had a second?
See, I was like, I'll second if no one did, sorry.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, timing issue?
Mrs. Jewen?
This, wait, hold on. Is this a public safety issue?
Yes, Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director, um, this is the detour for Highway sixty-three.
Oh, okay.
And, um, the state actually is paying for these, um, to be installed. It's gonna be a span wire system like Green Hill.
Thank you.
In progress.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance?
Second.
Mr. Oh, sorry.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimp?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.